Call this meeting of New Iberia City Council to order. We have the prayer and the pledge led by Councilman Calvin Bagnow.
Bow your heads. Good all, we come to you tonight as servants. Servants for you, servants for the citizens of New Iberia as elected officials. We ask you to guide us in our deliberations and watch over us. And help us to be mindful of everyone and work towards the development of New Iberia. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law and the United States of America. Intended Republic, with its standfastes. One nation, under God, in the great heavens.
Roll call. Councilmember Natalie Roman.
Present.
Councilmember Peggy Durack.
Present.
Councilmember Robert Swier.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Dan Doyle.
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond Lewis. And Councilmember Calvin Bagnow.
Yeah.
Mayor Curry, you're in. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask everyone to put their phones on vibrate. And the first agenda item is public comment. We have one person who has completed a call to make public comment. You have three minutes to address the council. And there's no back and forth discussion during the public comment period. Mr. Michael Bell has completed a call. And he wants to discuss Agenda Item 6B. Which is a resolution for a special election for tax renewal for Public Works.
Yeah, good afternoon, first of all. We thank you for allowing me to be here. What I'm here for, Mayor, is basically to help try to save the Westin Swimming Pool. For one reason. It's more than just a place where kids and people in that community come to swim. It's a part of history for me. It was done, I think, in '57. So it meant a lot for the people in that Westin community. It meant a lot as much as-
Wait, Mr. Bell, I don't think we have, we don't have anything on the agenda concerning the pool.
Well, what I did, I read in the paper, that's why I'm taking this lead. It said that it had about the park and recreation. And that fell under that. That's the only reason why I'm here now. And I have the paper in my pocket now, on the white.
Oh, you're talking about the renewal of the millages?
Right, right.
Okay, does the council have any objection? It's not exactly, but does anybody-
If it's included-
Does the council have any objections, Tim continuing?
That was Report 8.
Okay, no objection. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, what I'm saying, that swimming pool was a part of history. Much like the School Days apartment that was deemed to be torn down. But people in that era felt the need because it was more than just a building. It was memories. It was part of history, their history. And it ended up being a School Days apartment. So I feel the same way about the Westin Park Swimming Pool. And I think it's gonna be, it really will be a sin, a city the size of New Iberia. If we allow that pool to be shut down permanent, if it's a couple of thousand dollars, a few hundred thousand dollars to repair that, it's gonna be worth it in the long term. Believe me, it will, because I had the opportunity to work in San Francisco with similar situation. And believe me, it never pays to destroy something that can be fixed. I was always taught you can always make a wrong right, but you can't ever make a right wrong. So what I'm asking, please consider this, and it's not a one-person problem. It's the city council have to get together and work this out. We have no transportation in the city of New Iberia. It's hard for kids to get to City Park. It's hard to get, for kids to get to the New Sugarina without transportation. You have a lot of kids that mother and fathers that working two jobs trying to make something mean. So what I'm saying, please consider the history of that swimming pool. And it's not a black or white issue. It's an issue that is right, that we need to make right. And what I'm saying is simply, those few dollars that it's gonna take to repair it, and I ask the city council, take a walk there one day out of your busy schedule and just look at that facility and see the needs. I see a wonderful thing. We just spent a whole lot of money prior, a few years ago, making a splash pool. And that was no avail, because nothing happened, because it was poorly constructed. Not blaming the city at all, but sometimes when we get people, contractors to do our work, we have to check these people to make sure it's done right. You see? And I always make it my business, when I come up here, I don't come up here with foolishness or blaming anybody. I make sure, I'm very careful what comes out of here is correct. Because once it's out, it's out. You can't correct it. So what I'm asking the city council, please get together and save our history. Save our swimming pool, because we feel like you do, the people that went to New Iberia City High through that era. And I can understand that. You fought to have your history preserved. So that's all what I'm asking. So please consider saving our Westin Swimming Pool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. We appreciate you being here. The next agenda item is Agenda Item 2, Acceptance of the Minutes of the June 17, 2014 meeting as published on Thursday, June 26, 2014. Motion by Mr. Doyle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bagnow. Is there any discussion? Any objection? No objection, motion carries. The next agenda item are persons to address the council. The first individual to address the council is Mr. Curtis Seagoo, a candidate for 16th Judicial District Court Judge, Division G.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, sir.
I got a question before the candidates come up. Will they be willing to answer questions?
Um-
I have always, as a candidate, been willing to answer questions after presentation.
Well, I think that the council should decide also if that's how you want to handle the discussion. Do you want this to be a question and answer?
Somebody got a question?
Is there any objection from the council if the candidates agree to make this a question and answer session?
Is there any protocol?
Any objection?
I'd be with my question, is there any protocol? Is that something we're allowed to do?
I avail myself as-
We just never have before.
I avail myself-
No, I understand that.
Okay.
And I don't see anybody that seek in public office that would not. I limit my question to one. I have one question. I ask all of them.
Okay. Does the council have any objection?
No.
Okay.
And it's up to the candidate whether or not, you know, we'll leave that up to you.
Okay, thank you.
If it's a question, we are allowed to answer as judicial candidates.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Curry, members of the city council. My name is Curtis Seagoo. I'm a resident of New Iberia. I live at 1018 West St. Peter Street in New Iberia. I'm married, my wife's name is Michelle. We've been married for 26 years. She's a teacher slash administrator with the St. Mary Parish School Board. We have three children, two adults, and we have a daughter going to 11th grade at Westgate High School. I grew up in St. Mary Parish in a little village called Glanco, which is not too far from Franklin. I graduated from Franklin High, 1975, 1979, I graduated from USL, now UL, with a major in pre-law. 1984, I graduated from Southern University Law School, and I was barred the same year. My legal career began by working with Charles Porter and Donna Fusilay in 1984. For a period of approximately one year, I worked at a county and a legal service corporation in Lafayette where I specialized in social security disability benefits, where we provided legal services to the very poor people. Coming back with poor, with Charles Porter and Donna Fusilay, I worked there a number of years. And then myself and Donna Fusilay started our own law firm. And in that practice, we handled family law, unemployment, workers' comp, person injury cases. We also did criminal defense work. For one year, I worked at the public defender's office in St. Mary Parish representing people charged with crimes who were unable to afford attorneys. While there, we handled a number of cases from drugs, to burglaries, to thefts, to attempted murders, and in some cases, a few murders. In 1995, I had the privilege of being appointed by then DA Bernardi Boudreaux to serve as an Assistant District Attorney. I've been there for over 19 years. I've been an attorney for gone on almost 30 years. It'll be October 5th, it'll be 30 years. In the district attorney's office, I've handled child support cases, juvenile cases, theft crimes, burglaries, robberies, attempted murders, crimes involving the elderly where they are a victim. I'm also one of the senior attorneys with our drug court program. And for approximately 10 years, I was legal advisor along with Jim McClellan, who is now a judge, as legal advisor to the St. Mary Parish School Board. The election will be held November 4th of this year. And in determining who should be elected judge, my primary focus is on independence and experience. I have the experience and the know-how to handle courtroom. Because whoever is elected come January 1st, 2015, they're gonna have to get on the bench and they're gonna have to know how to make rulings. There is no practice session. One very important thing is that I have a long history of handling jury trials. And in handling jury trials, the judge must know, in selecting jurors, he must know, or she must know, what challenges for cause are allowed, what preparatory challenges are allowed, in openings, bats and challenges, back strikes. In opening statement, a judge must know what statements are allowed by the prosecution and the defense in opening statements. In the trial, part of a jury trial, the judge must know what evidence is admissible and what evidence is not admissible. In closing arguments, you must know what statements are allowed in closing arguments. And a very important part that people don't realize is that in jury instructions, those are instructions that the judge gives to the jury in determining a particular case. Why I'm saying this is because if a judge make errors and a court finds that the defendant's rights were violated, you have, you may have to retry the case. Well, what does that mean? It depends, if a case is 15, 23 years old, and a judge orders a new trial because a judge made an error, you have to retry it. But what happens during those 15 to 30-year period of time? Evidence can get lost, witnesses die, witnesses move, witnesses' memory are not the same as it was when the crime first occurred. So I ask you for your vote come November 4th, 2014. Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
I do have one question, but I got one comment. Can I ask you what prosecution that you do now? What side is it, criminal or misdemeanor or?
I primarily focus on felony cases. Those are cases where a person can go to prison for one year or up to life in prison.
And I only ask that because Lori Landry was elected judge years ago. And I know because, in fact, some of those cases that she was dealing with had to be going through the courts. Because she just did, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, misdemeanors her first year. Because they asked retired Judge Ann Stevens-
Simon?
Ann Simon, correct, to come in. And that's pretty much what, that same protocol would apply. You couldn't-
Okay.
-sit on as judge.
Basically, when I started, I started in felonies because I was already an experienced attorney. And the protocol that was designed by judge, I mean, District Attorney Bernard Boudreaux is, for example, if I'm elected, I will go to either Berry Parish or St. Martin Parish because I cannot, I will not be allowed to hear any case that was filed prior to me getting elected.
Okay.
So-
That's my-
So for a period of two years, by the time I get back, I will go back to St. Mary, those cases should have been gone. But if some are still hanging around, I cannot hear those cases.
Okay. And not my question though, because I only ask that because I worked as a bailiff under City Abass administration. Got to know some very good judges in the 16th Judicial Court system. And that was my only basis, because I seen firsthand Judge Lori Landry couldn't handle certain cases. That was my only basis. My question to you, and will be to the rest of the candidates, I'm sorry you're the first one, but as a public servant, and I guess in a way that you are, because you work for the District Attorney's Office. But my question is, as a public servant, because I like to make myself open to the public, have access. I think in my nine years of public service, it was one call I didn't return. Never returned it, never entertained it. It's not that people always looking and wanting you to do something. Sometime they just want to hear. Because from where you sit, sometimes you can view a case in writing, but it may not be all that's in writing. Some things may not be shared from the prosecution standpoint of view, prosecutor standpoint. And it may be some things that's not shared by the council, whoever the defendant is. But further, my question is, once, if you're elected, will you be accessible or make avail yourself, because you will have a secretary, you will have a paralegal? Those things I know. You may have something else that they, they've added to a judge's office staff, if you will. And I only ask that question because I just don't want to see people every six years, or whatever the term is. I want to feel comfortable, not as an elected, but as just a, and I'm not just an ordinary citizen, but I want to feel comfortable if someone needs to talk to you or speak to you, that they have the same access as a public servant that I have. That's my question.
Okay, basically there are certain restrictions placed on judges. One is a judge cannot give legal advice.
No.
If someone wants to come to a judge's office, the judge cannot give legal advice. Number two is, if you have a party of two or three or more people that has a case in front of a particular judge, that judge can not talk to one party without the other parties being there. Because it's quite obvious, because that one person can come to a judge's office and tell the judge the story behind the whole case. And when the judge goes later on to try the case, he's gonna have in the back of his mind, well, these people told me this and they told me that. And that can have some type of influence on the judge's decision. So if someone wants to come and talk to me about something that has nothing to do with my court or my docket, I'm free to talk to them. You know, as my 19 years in the District Attorney's Office, I have talked to many people about many different things. I've tried to help them as much as I could in a particular case if I couldn't help them. I have never turned anyone around who wanted to talk to me. Even the parents of somebody who was charged with a crime, I would talk to them. But I also would tell them, your son has such and such a record. And because of that record and because of this new crime that's been committed, I have to offer this as a plea bargain. But you know, other than that, I'm willing to talk to people, except with the restrictions placed on judges, I'm limited, limited as to what I can do. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next person to address the council this evening is Ms. Lacretia Picante. And she also is a candidate for 16th Judicial District Court Judge, Division G.
Good afternoon. My name is Lacretia Picante, and it gives me great pleasure to come before you this day and announce my candidacy for District Judge for Division G. I'm the mother of two. I'm from Genneret, Louisiana, but I reside in the great city of New Iberia. I'm a graduate of Mont Carmo Academy in 1984. In 1988, I received my Bachelor's of Arts degree, a political science history with a minor in French from our great university, Louisiana State University. From there, I received my Juris Doctorate degree from another great university, Southern University Law Center. I've been practicing law now for about 19 years in the areas of civil, family law, personal injury, juvenile delinquencies, child in need of care, FANS, families in need of services, and criminal law. For about seven years, I served as a public defender for the 16th Judicial District Court whereby I handled juvenile cases. I'm licensed to practice law in all courts in the state of Louisiana. I'm also licensed to practice law in the United States Western District of Louisiana, the United States Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, and I had a great honor of writing a brief for the United States Supreme Court. I'm running for judge because the people of the 16th Judicial District have asked me to. I believe a judge should be a judge that will bring justice to all and not a select few. Fairness to all and not a select few, but above all, honesty. I believe a judge should be firm, yet compassionate. I'm not a politician, and I will not insult you by coming before you only during election time. I want to meet with elected officials, community leaders, religious leaders, on a semi-annual basis to listen to the concerns of the citizens that we serve. I want to bring a change to Division G by opening its doors, bringing leaders such as yourself, business leaders, religious leaders, together to act as interventionists for the youth of our community. By visiting our schools, educating our youth about the justice system, and serve the people fairly, honestly, and open for the parishes of Iberia, St. Martin, and St. Mary. Again, my name is Lacretia Picante, and I'm a candidate for judge for Division G.
Mr. Lewis, did you have a question?
Ms. Picante-
Yes.
I ask you the same question, because as a public official, I have to deal with people day in, day out, some things beyond me. Because I caught myself, found myself today trying to help a young lady get into some kind of drug treatment program. And if you look at my duties as a city councilman, and we accomplished that. We accomplished that. But I'm of the, I don't want to see people just every six years, election time. Will you, barring the constraints of the law as a judge, meet people, greet people, though you, you can't legally, maybe you may, Ms. Seagoo just said it, certain things, constraints, you have to be working under. Are you, as a candidate, willing to, and as a public servant, as I am already, that have worked the courts and availed myself to people, and again, it was one phone call in nine years that I didn't return. I pride myself on that.
I agree with you. Outside the judicial canons that would restrict the activities of a judge, I believe, as I said before, I want to open the doors, open dialogues, come into the community, talk about the problems that are facing, and see if we can come up with solutions. Because juvenile crime is on a high rate, and we gotta do something about that. And if we get together and act as interventionists, maybe we can deter some of that. So to your answer, outside the canons of the judicial, the judicial canons, yes, I'll meet with you, sir. Most definitely, and I welcome anybody's opinion. I think as attorneys, and I can speak for everybody, we're public officials already, because when I get stopped in the grocery store, I just can't say, I'm not gonna answer your question. I gotta sit there and entertain that, because I wear all hats. I just don't take my hat off when it comes five o'clock, you know? So sometimes my kids get tired of that, but it's my profession and that's who I am. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to address the council this evening is Mr. Dean Watney, candidate for 16th Judicial District Court Judge, Division A.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know most of you, of course, my name is Dean Watney. Candidate for 16th Judicial District Judge, Division A, which is a different division than who you've heard from tonight. There are some retirements in our 16th Judicial District. One of them is in Division A, and that is one of the seats we're running for. It's a three-parish district. My wife is Catherine, graduated with the mayor, and I have three children. We've been married for 40 years. I have three children, Michael, David, and Leah. I have two granddaughters, and I have a third granddaughter who's gonna present herself next month. So we're excited about that. We, I have a family tradition like some of you here, of public service and public commitment. And I understand that tradition. It's been handed down to me from my father and my brother. And my children are involved in community services as well. And that is one of the reasons I'm running for a district judge. You know, as candidates, we all talk about our qualifications and experience, and I don't think I have any shortage of that. I've been practicing for 30, almost 38 years in private practice, started with Armentor and Watney. And when my brother became judge, it became Derwan and Watney. And I was always on the second name. The W is always on the second name, it seems. And for the last five years, I've also been an Assistant District Attorney doing primary governmental work. In my private practice, I've represented all types of clients and all types of issues. We've done all kinds of law. I've taught law at the University of Phoenix. I taught several courses there, in business law and employment law. So I think I have the experience. But as I go around these three parishes, I talk to people, and I think what they're interested in is people within, running for office with integrity and honesty and family values and a commitment to community service. That's what I've picked up as I've gone around. And I think my work here in the last 37 years, and maybe before that, when I was in high school even, has demonstrated that commitment. Catherine and I are both from New Iberia. We've lived here all our lives. And the, my participation in civic service organizations, my commitment to my church as a minister, zucharistic minister, lecturer, I'm a trustee of my church. I think the most promising and most rewarding thing Catherine and I have done for our churches, we used to teach the pre-marriage course. And that was quite an experience, and we still have people coming up to us today talking about that experience. And I think that's important in dealing with our families. And my private work and community work has involved listening and trying to resolve issues. All of my private practice, I find myself trying to resolve issues with my clients and other parties. And sometimes you can't resolve them and you litigate them. And I think as, my experience as a judge ad hoc, I took Judge Segura's place a few times in civil and criminal cases and found that a rewarding experience. I served on your civil service board for 15 years, 10 as chairman. And I think, maybe we didn't always agree, but I think the mayor will agree that we always let everybody who had something to say talk. We listened. Everybody was given the opportunity to say, I've even coaxed them to say things sometimes at meetings. We had some longer hearings, but I used to joke, my wife would reheat our supper several times because I let people talk and we heard all the evidence. As a judicial candidate, I think bringing about justice is not just in the realm of lawyers and judges, it's a community partnership. And that's kind of the answer to your question before you answer it. It's community partnership with the judges, the lawyers, community leaders, our community, our faith, and our families. I think that all goes together to having justice in our communities. So I want to offer my experiences, my demeanor, my integrity, for the office of judge to make this justice work in our areas. I would appreciate your support and your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
I got a question.
Good luck.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my question is, I hear the qualifications of all the people running for the position that you're running for. And my thing is, I want to know if your passion is gonna go further than your position as far as a judge, meaning the problems we have in our community with the juveniles and a lot of juveniles being put back on the street after certain crimes because we have nowhere to house them, to be able to help them get rehabilitated or whatever. I just want to see if you're gonna go further in working with the people in the community, public officials, people in the churches and all, to try to see if we can do something about that problem.
Mr. Merrill? Mr. Merrill, my commitment has been to work with other people. I think that's pretty well-known. And, you know, my brother started the juvenile, the drug court. I'm committed to that. I think that there are some areas we need to look at in working with the community to expand the juvenile court system and to look at mental health issues as they interact with those court systems. My commitment has been beyond my job. And I think, I think that's what we need to do. I think we need to work to find some solutions to some of those issues that we face. Some of it's a funding issue, but I think we can look at some creative ways to try to make that system work. Thank you.
Mr. Watney, I enjoyed and had the privilege of working with the Honorable Gerard Watney, your brother. Very knowledgeable man, very good man. But you've answered my question. You've answered my question about public access. People want to just talk, though you may not legally can. I'm not suggesting legally advising anybody, but sometimes you need an ear just to vent, talk about matters. And so you've answered my question. I'm satisfied. I'm almost tempted to ask you a trick question about the separation of state and church, but I'm not going to do that to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not so much as a question as a statement. I know Mr. Watney for a long time. He is my attorney and he is a good person. He lets you know what you don't know, you know? And he's following in his father's footsteps. I'm quite sure he's turning over in his grave dancing and so on. And I love to see in that seat, Mr. Watney. I'm not promoting you or anything, but I support you one hundred percent.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard.
Good luck, Mr. Watney.
Appreciate it.
I just say run, run, run.
And not goers.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
The next person to address the council this evening is Mr. Curtis Seagull and it's concerning the West End Revitalization Project.
Good afternoon. Mayor Curry, council. My name is Attorney Harry Daniels III. I'm up here. I'm not running for office, unfortunately. I was originally born in New Iberia. I moved away when I went to college. And I currently live in Gonzalez, Louisiana. About four months ago, I was asked to join this group to help revitalize the Weston Park, to which I graciously accepted. Piggybacking off what Mr. Bell said earlier as we begin the meeting that, you know, the park, we formed a lot of memories in that park and, you know, thinking about those memories, I can remember when Mr. Shadu would chastise us for, you know, slam dunking on the basketball goal or, you know, slamming the ping pong tables or Ms. Peggy coming at us and fussing at us for hanging around. So I do see, you know, the benefits of revitalizing the park. And that's something that our goal as a group, the Weston Revitalization Project, we want to do is revitalize the park because we see the problem that we're facing with a lot of juvenile, as we said, there's a lot of juvenile crime. There's nowhere really for the juveniles to go at this point. So we, in effort to, you know, curb that problem and stop the problem before it happened and also to bring back those memories to help these juveniles form, have their own memories as they grow up. Because when I speak of memories, when I think about it, I can say that my, my four best friends, we all met in the Weston Park. And I can honestly say that, you know, we all graduated from college and we all, you know, successful in whatever fields we're in. So we, we're asking the council just for the support, you know, as we embark on this endeavor to help revitalize the Weston Park. And we thank you guys for having us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
It's you. First of all, when I asked to revitalize the park, I didn't know which direction I was going in or what would happen. But to these strong people that I'm going to announce tonight, they put me in the right direction and I don't have much to say in the meeting or in making the decision. We want the community to come out and join us, not just talk, not just hold your pocket closed. Come out and support this revitalization program. We working hard and tirelessly. We selling shirts. We're going to be doing a lot of activity. Our member is Mr. Harry Daniel. He is an outstanding attorney. But he also was raised in the Weston Park. I guess he born in the Weston and his mother so adamantly support him. She's one of the committee members. Ms. Chrissy Daniel, would you please stand? Ms. Tina James is the secretary. We have Ms. Mary Mallory is one of our committee members. We have Ms. Janice Barado, hard-working member. We also have Ms. Peggy Garrus, who also worked with us. Ms. Sherri Guidry, and we have a few other people that joined our meeting. And it surprised me. Can you come up with the picture, Mr. Seagull, please? We have a plaque to present to the kids that donated and worked hard to donate us thirty-seven hundred dollars. So reach in your pocketbook, reach in your pocket, get in your piggy bank, whatever. A penny, we'll take. Please come out and support this. Don't talk about it. Don't argue. Come out and support it. The sun is hot. But we will be in front of Freeman Thursday asking for donations. We was at the farmers market, the Saturday, and we was at the Weston Park, where they was the? Football, whatever. We were there also picking up donations and selling shirts. And I'm telling you, it's hot out there, but we willing to sacrifice. And these, I'm so glad, because Ms. Tina come all the way from Lafayette. But she was raised in the Weston and she came forward to be our secretary because she's experienced. We finally got our 501(c)(uh) number so we be able to hit y'all and y'all be able to donate and y'all be able to, you know, come for your tax. With tax time, everybody need a little something, so add the Weston Revitalization to your tax. I would like for the committee member to come up, all of them, if you don't mind, Mayor, with the sign of the project we picked, which is two hundred thousand dollars from the two to five years old and five to ten. And we also have the plaque with Mr. Seagull here, Mr. Larry Reshaw. I forgot. Excuse me, Larry. Mr. Larry Reshaw is also a committee member. You don't have your shirt on, so I didn't recognize you. And Ms. Heather, and Ms. Heather Dominick, please come up. Y'all, where y'all shirt from y'all school? No, I want y'all to come up and let the community see y'all because when we going to be out there asking for money, I don't want nobody to be a fraud. So if y'all all could come up front, Mayor, could, is that okay?
That's fine.
And Mr. Seagull going to show to the camera the plaque that we, no, come in the front. We going to present gift to the school board to hang on the hall, whatever hall they want to do or wall they want to do. Because these children work hard. Stand in front of the mayor. Get the mayor in the picture. Because she might reach in her pocket, but she bought a shirt, but she might still reach it.
I want to give y'all notice.
That's, thank you. I appreciate it. You better have to give it to Ms. Tina. I don't have enough money because everybody money look like mine. That's the joke. So these people work very hard. Mr. Reshaw donated the sign in front of the court.
Thank you all for your efforts and I am sure that you will raise the money that you need.
Mayor, I would like to read the plaque that will be presented to the students. Appreciation Award Presented to Iberia Parish Gifted and Talented Sixth Graders. We extend this token of appreciation with our heartfelt gratitude for your outstanding and dedicated service. Unselfishly given, presented by the Weston Park Revitalization Project Incorporated. And this plaque was donated by Mr. Larry Reshaw and Associates. I did.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
And thank all of y'all for working hard. Anybody else want to work? We have a meeting of the tent in the Weston Park this July the 10th, 6:00 P.M. So please come out and support your community and don't complain. Come out and support.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. Thank you all. We appreciate your efforts. The next person that we have on the agenda is my recommendation. And just for the public to know, the mayor has two positions that they can, that can be recommended to the city council and they have to ratify those positions for the Port Commission. And the first person that I have this evening that I would like to recommend for the Port Commission is Mr. Michael Maynes. And I'd like to give him the opportunity to address the council prior to your vote.
I'll be very brief. Mayor, thank you for recommending me and thank you for each of you as council members considering me. I think all of you have received my resume. And all I would encourage you to do is if there's someone in the mix that has a better set of qualifications, better experience, better integrity than me, vote for them. If I'm the best you got, vote for me. Thank you all and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Maynes. And each of you have a copy of his resume and his application in your packets. He has a very impressive resume and I guess at this time we'll do a motion and a second and then there can be discussion or. A motion by Mr. Merrill? Second by Mr. Bagnow. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I saw an article in the Daily Iberian yesterday. And I need to clear up a few things because nobody speak for me. I'm of my own good mind, my own good health, and I thank God for my strength that he gives me every day I wake up until the time I go to sleep. If, Mayor Curry, if we as individuals on this council feel a person is qualified enough, they will and can get a vote from Shadu Lewis. And my rationale with saying that because I saw some, your comment was that you felt a vote against Mr. Maynes was a vote, like we were voting against you to get back at Mr. Maynes. And that is the furthest thing from the truth. The furthest thing from the truth. I don't operate like that. But when I looked at the list that was published in the Daily Iberian, maybe early this month, the latter part of those who had submitted resumes and applications for the position, I took that into consideration. And I saw some, and yes, by charter, it's your recommendation. But Mayor, you also ran some years ago on progress through unity. You used to talk or ask the council if we had any recommendations for this, that, board, or commission. You used to do that, but that's no longer the case. But that, that's your business because the charter gives you that kind of delicate, dedicated authority to make your decision. But I want to let the public know. My vote not to support Mr. Maynes is not because it's an anti-vote against Hilda Rose Day Curry as mayor. It is not. But when I look at the names that came up from Raymond Bernard Minord, Ted Kons, I looked at Will Longeny. I looked at the names that were published in the paper and some of these people have experience. When the parish is paused to grow, they just about to receive millions from the federal government to deepen the canal, to expand access to the port, to grow this parish economically where the city of New Iberia will benefit. I need somebody with some experience. I need somebody with some knowledge of the process. So this is not an anti-Hilda Rose Day Curry vote. That's what I'm looking for in a candidate. Whoever you recommend, they need to come with that kind of stuff because we paused, the parish paused and ready to run. I don't know why the Port Commission or parish government next, just never exappropriated the property. They have nothing but swamp, swamp and swampland. You can't build nothing on it. So why not let the port deepen and widen? Why has it been for many years this opposition to that? I don't know, but I know the feds are looking at our parish, looking at this port to give us the strength and the basis and the things we need to economically grow Iberia Parish that will indirectly impact the city of New Iberia. So again, I just wanted to clear the air on that article. So my vote not to support Mr. Maynes tonight, that's my vote. And that's my decision. And I'm telling you why. I need somebody that can hit the ground running. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address, yes, Ms. Gerard?
I want to clarify my vote also. I'm voting against Mr. Manor, but it's not a vote against Ms. Curry. Believe me, you have nothing to do with this. I look at the articles. When I got them, some of the resume, whatever I got, and the ones I spoke to, spoke to some of them. And I just made my decision on a lot of the articles that I read in the paper that Mr. Manor had put out. And I just decided not to. It's not against Ms. Curry.
Is there anyone else that would like to make the comment? At this time, I'd ask you to vote your machines. A yes is in favor of Mr. Maynes's appointment and a no is against it. Motion fails. Ms. Robat, yes. Ms. Gerard, no. Mr. Swear, no. Mr. Doyle, no. Mr. Merrill, yes. Mr. Lewis, no. And Mr. Bagnow, yes. Mr. Maynes, thank you very much for your.
Well, I appreciate being considered. I understand you. And respect your, what you thought to the process.
Thank you. I think you would have made a wonderful commissioner, but unfortunately, the vote didn't go your way. But I appreciate you putting yourself out there and agreeing to serve. Thank you very much. The next person was unable to attend this evening. It's Mr. Mark Dorey. He is out on business, but did want you to know that he does want to serve. He has served, I think, for the past sixteen or seventeen years and would like to be reappointed. His resume is also in your packet and I ask for a motion?
A motion?
Motion by?
Mr. Merrill.
Mr. Merrill, second by Mr. Bagnow. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Because in the paper, I noticed, and I later found out, Mr. Dorey is a brother-in-law of, or the brother-in-laws of one of the other applicants.
Right.
Raymond. And which is your, you can appoint whomever you want or submit to this council. But I like some assurances because we moving in a pivotal time in our decision-making to who we appoint. Right now, I just wouldn't want brother-in-law serving from New Iberia on this Port Commission. I talked to Mr. Dorey and he assured me it wouldn't be a factor. But for some who know that, I, because you will have to submit somebody else's name to the council. And again, that's your right. Charter gives you that. Charter gives you that right, an obligated duty and responsibility. But I, I wouldn't want to support, and then you come back with the brother-in-law. You got several members on the commission, the Port Commission, and I got somebody tied up with two votes locked in stock. That's a, as an elected official, that's a hard swimming you got to do. So that, that's my only comment. If I support Mr. Dory tonight, I will not support Mr. Maynor. Bernard, Bernard, I will not support.
Okay, now, Mr. Merrill?
Yeah, I also looked into, I spoke to Mr. Dory as well, and one thing that Mr. Lewis did take attention to was qualifications and experience. I know Mr. Dory has a lot of experience. I've also did my homework and looked into other areas of what he has done, and, and without the politics being involved, what he can do. And I really, I really like his experience. I really like what I've checked into, and I really feel and believe that we do need some experience there too, to be able to move forward with all this monies that we're going to receive from the federal government, because there's a lot of money, and once again, it's going to be a big push for Iberia Parish, and I'm praying that this does work. But we do need somebody that does have a lot of experience to go forward, and I like his qualifications. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I've got a question.
Mr. Doyle?
Mayor, so if we vote for Mr. Dory or not, we'll be looking for someone else to fill the city's spot. How long is the, um, applications will still be open to be submitted?
The applications are open. They're, I'm going to keep them open, and I will submit another name at the next council meeting.
So there's no date for the...
I have no deadline. As long as, as long as we putting people up, I'll accept applications. Some people were not aware that they can apply, so the more we advertise it, the better it is.
You know, and just for the record, talking about Mr. Bernard, he, him and his brother-in-law Mark did serve for years on the council prior, but he was appointed by the parish, not by the city's appointment. But that's, you know, the ticket is to that point. But I just want to know how long the application process will be over.
They're open right now.
And when is the date that we have to put someone into that?
September, I think it's the eighteenth, something, somewhere around, I think it's September eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I want, uh...
Mr. Rack?
I want to ask, first of all, there's no closing date on the application. He answered that for me. There are seven member on the board. Do they serve a particular district, or they all just serve the whole parish? About, that's what I'm...
The city of, the city of New Iberia has two appointments.
Yeah, but all the board member represent the whole...
But they have to just be a city resident. That's the only requirement. There's not any particular district that they have to represent.
There's two cities, three counties, one county.
Yeah, but they represents the whole, the whole Port Board. They represent, that's all I want to do. You know, like us, representing...
Right, oh, no, they represent the entire board, but they're just representatives. Two from the city, three from the parish, one from Generec, and one from Lord.
I, I know Mr. Dory, and I like him a lot. You know, he's a nice person, but he's very well experienced. He's qualified, and he, he's friendly. He come out and, because I supported him, Lord, when I was sitting on the step at Hopkin Street school crossing the kids, I could remember, the first time he got on the board. And he's never forgotten me from that date. You know, I don't owe him anything, he don't owe me anything, but to represent the parish and the city of New Iberia to the best of his ability. And I feel to all the function and everything I've been through for the Port Board, he have done his job. Just open the canal.
Is there anyone else? Uh, Mr. Bagnow?
The only, I guess, comment was, and you hit on that point, is that you're still accepting resumes? Because I did speak to someone this past week and asked me about it, and I thought you might still be, so I did, I didn't tell them wrong, I told them that they can...
The applications are on the web.
Right, and basically, you just present another name to us at some later date of someone that you feel you want to submit.
They need to submit a resume and their application.
All right. Mayor?
Yes, is it?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Isn't the Port Commissioner going to be leaving? That's, that's serving sometimes in September.
Yes.
Would y'all have a date on?
We just said it. I think it's September eighteenth, somewhere around that date, September eighteenth.
Okay. Well, you've answered my question. I was going to ask Councilman David Ditch, Parish Councilman, but you answered. I see you in the audience. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? I'd ask you to please vote your machines. A yes is in favor of Mr. Dory's appointment, a no is opposing his appointment.
See, Mayor?
Motion carries unanimously.
See, Mayor?
The next agenda item is a resolution. Agenda item six, Madam Clerk?
A resolution to consider and adopt the 2014 millage rates.
Motion by Mr. Bagnow?
Second.
Second by Mr. Merrill. Uh, Lewis, is there any discussion? Please vote your machines. Motion carries unanimously. The next agenda item is a resolution, Madam Clerk?
A resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal of a special tax therein, making application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. This is a renewal, maintaining and improving public streets, sidewalks, and alleys within the city.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Merrill, second by Mr. Bagnow. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Swier?
Mayor, this is a special election we're going to call by itself, or we're going to...
No, sir, it will be on the November fourth election, ballot. Uh, yes, Mr. Dory?
You say it's a property, it's a millage, right? What millage is it?
It's streets and sidewalks.
It's the, it's the two-point-eight-nine millage?
Well, actually, it was, it's two-point-eight-nine now. When we adopted the millage ten years ago, it was three-point-four-five. So we're going to go back to the three-point-four-five, which was the original millage. It has been rolled back over the last ten years to where we're collecting less than we were collecting ten years ago.
So we are rolling it forward?
We're rolling it to what it was originally, which is three-point-four-five.
Well, did you know what year that, when that was?
It was ten years ago. We were, it's, it's a ten-year renewal.
How much more will it bring in?
Six hundred?
It'll bring in probably a little over a hundred thousand more a year.
So this six-seventy-six mayor is with the hundred thousand in it?
That's it, that's with, and, you know, for the public to understand, over the last ten years, we have not rolled our millages forward. We have rolled them back. So actually, the millage was two-point-eight-nine, I mean, excuse me, it started out at three-point-four-five, and we have rolled back now to two-point-eight-nine. So all we're doing is going back with the millage to the, where we began at the three-point-four-five. That's the millage that we had ten years ago. And we certainly, you know, over ten years, you certainly need to bring in additional funding for the operations of the city.
But I just want to make it clear that we rolled, it's only one millage we're doing.
It's only one millage. That's the only one that, that is currently up for renewal.
Thank you.
That's the only one. Remember, last year, we did Parks and Recreation, so they're, they're staggered. They're not all, they don't all come do at the same time. Mr. Rack?
We roll back the Park and Recreation Millage, and now we have this millage for street sidewalk, alley within the city limit. Clarify what Mr. Mike Abell was talking about to the public, because he said he think there's a clause in it.
I don't know what he, I, I don't, didn't really understand exactly how it tied into the millages other than the fact that, I think he's alluding to the fact that these taxes can be used to operate the swimming pools. You know, that's, that's what I assumed he was addressing, was the issue that, and that's for a whole nother discussion.
But yeah, just to clarify it with the public.
Right, and that's why I questioned as to whether or not, because it really was not an agenda item per se, but I assume that what he's saying is, with the renewal of these millages, can we use some of this money to continue to operate the pool in the West End Park? And that's something we'll have to address at budget meetings.
We need every pin of district run the city.
The millage that we are adopting, Mayor, is on the streets and sidewalks, nothing to do with the pool.
It's only streets and sidewalks. Early on, you just renewed the millages that we currently have, and this increase will not be till next year.
Okay.
So, does anybody else have a question? Because I, I want everybody to be sure, I want the public to understand also that this is a renewal. It's not a new tax.
I want to know where we are, where were we on the street program?
You have something in your packet. Maybe I could explain it to y'all after this, if you don't mind. Before, at the end of the meeting, I'll be glad to tell you. I have some information in your packet.
All right.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rack, did you have a question?
I just wanted to know, uh, get a copy of the list of the streets y'all repairing?
That we repairing?
And in order that they were called in?
That we repairing now.
Now, because I call in Lombard Street, it's short over five years.
Okay.
And look like it's not even on the list.
Okay, wait, can we vote on this right now?
Yeah, I understand, but I want a copy of it.
Yeah, that's, okay, we'll give that to you. All right, please vote your machines. This is in favor of the renewal of the Streets and Sidewalks Millage, which I'm being the November fourth ballot. Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Rack will get you the list of the streets that are being repaired.
I'll pick it up tomorrow.
Okay. The next agenda item, oh, if you don't mind, do you mind if I explain? It's not on the agenda, but if you have no objection, can I answer the question that Mr. Merrill had concerning the street program? You, Ms., we are going to have a budget meeting after this meeting, and our budget is looking better. We're still watching our budget very closely, but it is looking better. I have put in your packet the evaluation of the streets that Bayrod inhabits did for the city. Give you the opportunity, you look at it, you make written comments as to what streets you want to see overlay. This is an asphalt street program. We're not doing concrete, it's just asphalt. And Mr. Leroy continues with Public Works to make concrete street repairs. But I would ask for your input and your comments concerning the streets that you have on your list. We cannot go over two million dollars. Two million is all that we have left. And included in there is Dasbit. That, that has to be included, we've already voted on it, and the parish agreed to pay half. So that's definitely, do not take that street out. That's definitely included.
How about...
Where the list of the streets?
It's in your packet, it's in your packet.
How about the south porch, the south porch?
Whatever's in there is what the, the engineers evaluated as the streets that are in most need are repaired, and only asphalt, only asphalt. So, and we can have a special meeting if you would like, take a look at it, and we can have a special open meeting for discussion if you so choose. But go ahead and take a look at it, and we need your input, and if you would like to have a meeting, we can certainly do that also. Okay, the next agenda item is a budget amendment, and we have Ms. Gora here this evening to discuss the budget amendment. It's in your packet.
The budget amendment for tonight's consideration is going to amend two funds, one being the Drainage Fund. We're going to put an additional eight hundred thousand dollars in expense with a four hundred thousand dollar contribution coming from the parish for the Ormenco project. And the second one is on the Street Construction Fund. We're putting a hundred and eighty-five thousand in the contract services line, and with the contribution coming from Iberia Parish Government to cover that portion of Dasbit Roads and improvements.
It's just a move of, of just moving that money, stuff like that.
Yeah, they're basically, yeah, just even.
So everything still stays the same?
Yes, Mr. Bagnow?
Well, the Drainage Fund will reduce by an additional four hundred thousand. That's the city's share of that additional cost.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Bagnow, and a second by Ms. Robin. I think they want to move it along to approve the budget amendment. Please vote your machines.
I just wanted to make sure.
Sure. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Gora.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
That four hundred thousand for the Ormenco Canal was the money we're waiting for to put things out for bid, correct?
Yes, yes.
Now, we can put the project to bid.
Yes, we're waiting, right now, we are waiting on a permit from the Corps of Engineers, and we, we're getting close to getting ready to put it out for bid. Almost all the property owners have been paid. There are a couple of them that have not received their checks yet. They've all been cut. It's just a matter of locating them and getting the money to them. We're getting very close to bidding it out.
But that's good. That's what I was going to ask, if the money was in our hand, the four hundred thousand dollars in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next agenda item is Property Standards, and we have Mr. Landry. The first is a revisit, five eighteen Walton.
Hold on. Okay. The law is still working. The attorney, yeah, I talked to the attorney today, and there's legal action being taken, so he asked me to give him another ninety days.
So move.
Motion and a second to revisit in ninety days. Is there any objection? No objection, motion carries.
I think that date is October, uh, October the first.
October first, okay. Next property is seven twenty West Street.
West Avenue.
That's west, corner of west.
I know, I was trying to figure out.
It's on the corner of west.
Seven twenty West Avenue, okay.
I talked to the property owner today, and he's having some legal issues too. But, but he told me he would probably tear it down himself, so I told him I'd give him sixty days.
I'll vote ahead.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Rack to give him sixty days, and a second by Mr. Swier. Is there any objection? No objection, motion carries. Okay, um, then, yes, the next property is five twelve Anderson Street, and we need a motion to remove it from the demolition list.
Five, I, I spoke to you about the problem. Do you think I should vote on this before you take?
Well, we need, we need to remove it, because they have a sale for the property.
Okay.
Oh, I was wondering, is there a sale for the property?
I think so.
I'll so move.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Rack, a second by Ms...
No, I didn't make a second, I was just want, I mean, we've nev- we've never had a sale come up since I've been on the council. I just wanted to remove it before the sale goes through, or do we wait for the sale to go?
No, the house was demolished, the house was taken off of the property. The house is gone.
Okay.
That, that house is gone. Yeah, that house is gone.
Okay, well, that's true.
Okay, let's go back. Because I, I, I'm, I was thinking the same thing. So this, normally, we have a picture of the property with it removed.
Yeah, they got the wrong picture.
Okay.
There it is. That's the house removed.
This is it, that's why I said. Okay, so the property has been, the building has been demolished?
Both of them.
And we need to remove it from the list? Now, we got it. Okay, Mr. Rack, you making that motion?
I made the motion and I asked a question.
And Mr. Doyle said he'll second it now. Is there any objection? No objection, motion carries.
Mr. Jim.
Okay.
Excuse me, but isn't correct to ask who buying?
I, I don't know.
I know, I think I know.
They just told me there was a sale, and the attorney called, so...
Good, good.
Okay.
I'm glad.
Very quickly, we'll have our announcements, and then we'll go into a brief budget meeting. The next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, July fifteenth, 2014. Next Neighborhood Watch Meeting for District One, Ms. Robin, will be held on Thursday, July tenth, at five thirty at Dasbit Elementary and the Library. Next Neighborhood Watch Meeting for District Four, Mr. Merrill. It is, I'm sorry? Oh, okay, I got you. Is, um, July the seventeenth at the Slime and Theater, and everyone is invited, and it's normally at six PM. And also, the Fourth of July Parade will be July fourth, at six o'clock PM. And also, one more announcement I didn't have on here, the boat landing will be open tomorrow. We had the ribbon cutting this morning, and the Farm Marshal approved everything this afternoon, so it will be open tomorrow. So I would ask for a motion to adjourn. One other comment I want to make, the engineers noticed a six, seven-foot alligator right in front of the fishing pier, so please...
What?
There was a huge alligator right in front of the fishing pier. So I want people to be sure that they watch their children and be aware that there are alligators in the bayou. So I want people to be sure that they watch their children, and be aware that there are alligators in the Bayou Tesh.
That's to be expected, though.
We used to not see them, you know, that close to these.
They hungry.
So anyway, motion to adjourn, Mr. Doll makes a motion, second by Mr. Louis. Is this, okay. Everything looks good right now. The only disappointing factor is, if you look at your sales tax revenue, it's down for the month of June, one point eight oh percent, which brings us to, for the year, to just a one point two zero percent increase, which is, we're not keeping up with inflation. So it's tough, this is one of the issues we're facing right now, is that we're not bringing in enough sales tax revenue. Okay, I'll hand it over to Ms. Segura.
Included in the packet of information, I included a balance sheet, as well as a yearly budget report, which is what standard reports that I've given to you on a monthly basis. If y'all have any questions, we can go over those later, but I prepared that summary with the percentages to kinda show y'all, you know, where we should be based on how many months we are into the fiscal year. The reports that you have are through the month of May, so that's seven months into our fiscal year, so we should be at about fifty-eight percent of our budget. And I'll go through the little, the little summary page, just to highlight the ones that are outside that fifty-eight percent percentage. The, in the legal department, there is more revenue there, and it basically comes from forfeitures of bonds. That's not something that we budget for, because it's not, it's not a necessity that's gonna happen in every situation. So they are at eighty percent of their revenue budget. The finance department is at about seventy-four percent of its budget, and that, like I've told you in the past, is from Avalorm revenues. We collect that once a year, and also the occupational licenses, we collect that earlier in the fiscal year. And you know, the revenue's gotta hold us for the rest of the fiscal year as well. Planning and zoning is at about forty-nine percent of its budget, which is a little bit lower, but there's a huge grant that's in there for that boat dock project, and the revenue is a little bit behind on that, but it's based on how the expenses happen, and then the expenses have been more so in the spring of this year. We're not quite finished paying on the, on the contract. Nonprofit allocations is at thirty-one percent, basically, that's a grant for the homeless shelter, and they have not finished using all of their grant appropriations, so it looks like we're under, but it's based on when they submit their reimbursement requests, so it's not anything that we can control. Inspections, permits, and compliance is at eighty-seven percent of its budget, which is higher, which, you know, this is the last budget meeting, they were also, you know, higher than their budget percentage as well. The Sloman is at a hundred and five percent of its budget, so it's already achieved its revenue budget through the rentals of the Sloman. And again, you know, the rentals are not anything that we can really predict, so it's sorta just a guesstimate when we do adopt the budget. Parks and Recreation and Public Works are over its budgeted amount for the revenue as well. Both of those funds also receive Avalorm revenues. The Avalorm revenues are recognized in November, so it's skewed, you know, it's similar to the way that the finance revenue is, and as we go through the fiscal year, it'll level off.
Can we ask a question?
Sure, of course, this is important, just raise your hand and you'll stop.
In the Park and Recreation Funds, I wanted to know how was the city park program running? If we were keeping within the guidelines that you said?
Mr. Louis had requested some information on this, on the summer program, it's on your table.
It's in here.
I put it out for everybody, 'cause they had said that you had requested it.
Yes, I sure did.
And I cut it off on June the twelfth, because that was the last that we had payroll, which, you know, all the employees are gonna get paid again tomorrow, but those numbers weren't figured out until just yesterday, Monday, on Monday, we figured out those numbers. So that was prior, I mean, that was after you had made your request, so that number, those numbers are not in there.
But it looks real good.
Well, and you know, like on the revenue side, on the revenue side, you know, it could be a little bit higher, like the revenue that, some of the parents may have prepaid in advance for some of the weeks, you know, there's a, a lot of different varieties of different things. Yeah, but we've been watching on how much the spending, and every time the payroll comes in, I'll look, you can ask Tony, I'll call.
That's good.
That's good.
What you're saying is that of the revenue, we only collected fifteen thousand so far, and we projected ninety thousand, correct? But our expenses is only eight thousand, correct?
When we did the budget adjustment, we adopted, the adjustment recognized the summer registration of the seventy-five thousand. Knowing that they were gonna sell some concessions, we already had fifteen thousand in the budget, so we didn't put any additional money in the budget for concessions. So that was already the existing concession budget for, you know, and it also included, you know, some of the other facilities where they do sell concessions.
But you, right now, you're saying we only collected thirteen six in registration?
Correct, eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent, okay.
And, and we've only spent about fourteen percent of what we projected to spend.
So it doesn't matter how low we collect, just our, our expenses, it doesn't matter? We don't have to meet that seventy-five dollars?
No, 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 we're watching our expenses as opposed to our revenues and our expenses. We don't have as many children as we had projected, so...
That's great, thank you.
It's, we're watching it, they're doing a very good job in the park of managing.
Real good.
Yeah, but really, I wish I would visit the camp and rest in park, you're doing really good.
It's going well, huh, Ms. Roban?
I just have a question, this year compared to last year, did we go up on the rental rates for the Sloman? Because for us to already be at a hundred percent, I was just, did we go up on the rates, is it just renting way more?
We did, we went up on all the rates.
We went up on all the rates.
But I also, I dropped the revenue, I dropped the revenue. I wanna say last year's budgeted revenue was at twenty thousand, and I dropped it down to fifteen, just not knowing, you know, if it was gonna continue, and, you know, it's always better to have more revenue than you anticipate as opposed to less.
Right, I just could be at one oh five and a half percent already, I was just wondering if, I didn't know if Tony, you know, if he was renting out a lot more.
It is.
It is. Okay.
We went up on all the rates, not, not, not substantially, but a little, you know, we went up some on our rentals.
Okay, thank you.
While we're discussing budget, Mayor, and items, can we go over the role list and discuss the courses and everything? Or this is informal?
I mean, it is, can we finish this first, and if y'all want to, I'll be more than happy to, I have to go get my, my list, I don't have it with me. Let's finish this, and if y'all want to, I have no problem with it. Okay.
The garbage fund is at about fifty-one percent. The garbage fund receives its revenue from sales taxes, and we don't receive that check until the first. We actually received, you know, our sales tax check today in July, so it gets recognized in July, not in June. And then at the end of the year, we're gonna catch up with our accruals, so that's why it's a little bit behind. In the wastewater fund, they're at about twenty, twenty-eight percent of its revenue budget, and I've told y'all that in the past. You know, we have that six and a half million dollar loan that's budgeted for, and we recognizing our expense and our revenue as we receive those, and it's not necessarily, you know, equal to the, you know, one month at a time, it's just based on how the expenses flow. On the expenditure side, recognizing the areas that are outside the fifty-eight percent, the insurance. We paid our property insurance in January, January of this year, so that has traditionally, you know, through the, through the meetings, been higher than what our projections should be. Police Civil Service is a little bit higher, Police and Fire Civil Service, I'm sorry, is a little bit higher. We incurred some expense, I wanna say it was in advertising that was not budgeted for, and I mean, it looks, you know, seventy-one percent, it seems like it's really, really high, but it's like two, three hundred dollars, it's not, you know, a lot, a lot of money. Planning and zoning is at sixty-nine percent, and that's probably associated with the retainage on the project, which is why it's a little bit higher than where the revenue is. And the retainage won't be paid until after the contractor submits their clean lien, and then the revenue from the grant or agency is gonna be recognized at that time. The nonprofits are at sixty-one, sixty-eight percent, and basically, the allocations that are paid to IDF, the Veterans Organization, and I think it's the Bayou Tesh Museum, all of those are paid just at one time annually, not, you know, consistent over a monthly basis. So it'll even out as we get towards the end of the fiscal year. And the only one that's really, you know, out of range too, is the wastewater department. Their expenses are lower than what's projected, projected, but it's because of that grant, not the grant alone. We have six and a half million that's budgeted, and those expenses are less than, you know, the, the seven-month period. So, and the only other thing that I had, and I did update it today, based on the check that we got for the sales tax collections, and it is a little bit lower than where we were last month, or, yeah, last month at the same time, which was a little discouraging, but... I really don't know, I really don't.
It's always the school, when school is out, everybody leaves, go on vacation, now they're coming back, they're gonna start food shopping.
Well, you have an average from last, last year.
Maze sales, the, the check that we just got should be maze sales, 'cause they're collecting them up in May, they remit to the collection agency in June, and we receive that.
That one was slower, and the next one will be even slower.
Well, you see, the, what, what, what we're gonna have next month is, there's a bunch of taxpayers that pay on a quarterly basis, that, you know, their revenue doesn't come in each month, it comes in on a quarter, so that, that check is usually a little bit higher. So, but, but you know, when you compare between the same month, different years, hopefully, it's consistent. So.
The way you do this, this breakdown to each department, it's so easy to understand and that, but do, going through the budget and the line item, you can see some items is maybe a hundred and fifty percent or a hundred and twenty percent over the fifty-eight, but the whole budget's down for the department, when do, do we, should address that at one point about that line item?
I've already sent emails to all the department heads, and all of those have been corrected, with the exception of, like, within the DEQ loan budget, we have various projects, and there were some projects that I wasn't aware of when we actually did the budget adoption, you know, like last year, so that's the only areas that we need to go back and fix.
I just saw something like in Public Works Administration, you know, just line items, but do we address that?
Something was paid on a one-time basis, or...
Well, the only thing that has not been fixed in Public Works was an outstanding grant for safe rides to schools, and I'm gonna have to bring that to the council, because it's adjusting both revenue and expenses, but everything else in Public Works has been fixed, and there wasn't much in Public Works that needed to be fixed.
But I saw something that we budgeted twenty-five hundred, like forty-four hundred line item. And I'm not gonna go through it tonight, I'll look at it, but I just wonder, do we ever address that at one point before it gets to the end of the year?
That's what I did with the emails, saw the department heads, and they've already, but if you want, and I mean, if you wanna talk about those, I mean, give me a call, and I can tell you if it's...
I just don't like those ones, because that's all I'm concerned about. But they're all living within their means, you can't ask for no more than this, 'cause man, they're doing a great job, I have to say, I know it's not easy.
It's not easy, we've been, everybody working really hard to try and stay within those parameters, and still find areas.
But I've just had some questions, I'm not gonna do it tonight, I might just go ahead and email them.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, do you all wanna stay and go over the street program tonight, it's up to y'all.
I mean, I, I've already, I mean, I've already looked, I mean, I'm more than happy to let my fellow councilmembers know what I'm gonna ask for, for District One, and if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, you can call me on my cell. I'm open to talking to anybody else about the streets they want.
Is this the list right here, Mayor?
Yes.
Is that the list that they put, two point seven million?
Right, but we can't print two point seven.
We can only do two.
So that, well, and you have to deduct out the hundred and eighty-five thousand that, that the parish is going to pay, so...
These engineers had to go around the city with blinders on, Mayor, Walton Street.
Walton's concrete.
The blacktop board, they repaired the concrete board, but the blacktop board they didn't repair.
Well, I mean, this...
Witch Street from, from Persian coming down toward the fire station, that's the worst part of the city.
With the engineers, we can have a public hearing, a meeting with the engineers and discuss the streets. These are the streets that are in most need of repair.
Oh, no, no.
You might need to go ride, well, maybe you need to go ride, Mr. Sweare.
You go ride on Witch Street right there by the church, and then, and go ride on Walton Street, Mayor. You have blacktop the best part of Walton, and you left the worst part of it.
Well, maybe you should go take a ride.
I'd like for him to be the next meeting to discuss these streets, Mayor.
That'll be fine.
'Cause I tell you what, people can, you can forget about your tax in November, if you don't repair them streets.
Oh, Mr. Sweare.
Can we, can we turn answer requests of the night?
No, those are the only streets that they've evaluated, that's, you know, that's...